Welcome to this meeting. I apologize for the few minutes lateness starting. Wednesday 6th of August and it's the meeting of Oakham Town Council. I just want to make members of the public aware that a member of the public is filming the proceedings tonight. This is, he is allowed to do on to the new legislation. This has been recently released by the government tours. If you are unhappy at all about being filmed, you must make yourself clear and I will make it clear that it is unacceptable for you personally to be filmed at any time. Does anybody have any? Will it go on the internet? Can we make that clear there, Mr Brooks?
I did already pass on the message that I wouldn't be pointing the camera in the direction of the public.
Is that okay? Can I, I know you have made it clear to others, but obviously I've not spoken to you about this. We do need to talk some ground rules, obviously. I've got no problem with you filming, but I do request that you don't do any zooming in and out on people because that can be quite intrusive. Do you understand that?
That was one of the things I've already passed on that-
I know. I'm just assessing, I'm just establishing that as chair of the meeting so that we're all very clear about the rules involved.
Yes. The intention of recording is to show members of the public the good work of the council, as Mr Pickles said.
The only other thing I need to say is that obviously it is completely at your own risk and do you understand that?
My own risk. I don't quite get that, but thank you anyway.
Do you accept it?
Sorry?
You've obviously got step ladders-
Oh, sorry, I was distracted. I wasn't realising you were talking about the step ladder. Yeah, that's instead of standing on a chair. I thought of health and safety if it's required because we weren't, when people stand, I don't want to be filming the backs of them.
Okay, fine. So let's move on from that. I think we've covered that now. I do, I need to ask for a proposal of a second act from the floor. That Standing Order 1M relating to filming of meetings be waived. This is obviously as a legal component, so that's-
John, thank you.
Seconded by Alf. Okay, all those in favour?
Again, was I missing something? Sorry? Was I missing something? Yes?
Okay, so going to item one of the agenda this evening, which is apologies. We have apologies from Adam Low, who has a prior commitment. Would you like me to go around the one one proposed by John, seconded by- Can you do that, which I don't altogether? Okay, so Adam, obviously prior commitment. Maureen Dons obviously continues to hustle a little help. We agreed to extend her period of four apologies at a previous meeting. And Charles, who is not here this evening and I haven't received any direct apologies for him. Oh, and sorry, we just have the aunt who's unfortunately a daughter appears to have been involved in some accidents. So can I have, shall we whisper those fairly quickly? Adam first, proposed by John, seconded by Maureen. All those in favour? Thank you. And Maureen, proposed by- Seconded by Alf. All those in favour? Leon?
Proposed by John, seconded by Stan.
All in favour? Okay. Okay. I'll just open it to vote on Mr Howard. Declaration, oh Joyce, well Joyce has contacted us and said she may be late, but she is planning to- Declarations of interest. Any discutable community interests they may have or any of the councillors may have in respect to items on the agenda and any interest they may have in respect of such items. Any, what we should make in declarations.
Yeah, an interest in item 52, who is a neighbour and I'm chair of the United Association, so I'll take no, I'll stay in the room and take no part in the discussion of it.
Okay, if you're able to make sure that's in the book as well. But to all, because of course there was a meeting which was adjourned and then another meeting took place. We've taken advice on how we approve this because obviously I offered at the first meeting, but it was at the second. There were people at different meetings. So the only people who really vote for approval on those minutes are the people that attended both, which on my list are Joyce, who's not here yet, Stan, who was here for both, Alf was here for both, Leanne, who's obviously not here at the moment, and John, who will be working for both. So that gives us-
I'm going to call a meeting before it, so yes, you're correct. It doesn't have to be a call on a member of the station.
So has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Are they, are those that were present, both of them? So can I have a proposal for one of those people? Proposed by Stan, seconded by John, and those in favour that were-
And the rest of you are abstaining.
Yes. Questions? We've had non-motor time, so swiftly move on to number five, which is chairman's report. There is a copy on- Welcome Joyce. We did know you might be late, so welcome.
I'm not correctly guess, well, thank you.
Not to worry. There is a list of events that I've attended. It's been quite a busy time. You'll see it's mostly Saturdays and Sundays. I can't always make things during the week, but actually I haven't had to pass any events on to Alf after the last, last two months. There's two months here because I didn't talk about the tour last month. I would just like to have a, just speak briefly about the royal visit last Monday. I think you have a copy of the letter, so I should let you read it. But I did get a very nice letter from the Lord of Town and thank you that Town Council for all of their hard work that was put in. These things do go on in the background. There's lots of work that was done. So those of you that were involved in the preparations and then those of you that attended on the day, I know probably you wrote on our tour that you were doing your air ambulance bit that day, so equally kind of to you for being there for that. But Clarence House have contacted us to say that it was a very successful day and that Prince Charles and Trish and Paul probably enjoyed their day. So it's nice to receive that letter of thanks for being in person. Anybody got any questions about anything I've attended? So, part report.
Thank you, chairman. First, I want to make note, you've all got a copy of this. It's obviously the new legislation that came in yesterday and it's text from today on filming of meetings of parish councils. I do have a copy of the Plain English Guide, if anybody would like it, thirty more pages. Not all of it is relevant to town parish councils. As you have just done, a way of standing order 1M relating to the filming of meetings. However, in the longer term, the council will need to take steps to formally update standing orders to take account of the new rules. So I'll be going through this and making sure that all bases are covered. Next item, meeting of the council on September 10th, obviously five weeks away maybe. Please note this is going to be 7:30pm because the annual beating of the retreat will be taking place that evening in Market Place with Van on the parachute regiment. So that will give council members, if they choose to do so, to attend that event. I know Jamie's going, so as we have done over previous years, the meeting will be put back to 7:30pm. Willow Crescent play out a grant application. We've been told that unfortunately this has been put back for a couple of weeks. We, the meeting on Monday, August 11th. Hopefully we should know within a couple of days after that whether our grant application has been successful. If it has, then work should start within forty-five weeks after that. We, members have previously considered this item, the lease of car parking facilities adjacent to Brookhill Academy. We've now had a draft lease through, which we'll be sending through to the council solicitors to just have a look over that one. Planning okay, obviously the planning parks committee, if you want, is going to meet for another seven weeks. But you were previously informed that an appeal had been lodged against a decision by Roland County Council to refuse a planning application to convert garages into office space. That appeal has been dismissed. Okay, so I'll have a copy of the planning inspector's decision if anybody wants to see it. Works trees in Old Snakes Church. Again, you've been previously informed about this, that we apply to the diocese for faculty for works for trees, including the fanning of three trees, two of which would be replaced. These are the plum trees in the south-east corner of the churchyard. We've been advised that the application has been recommended for approval, but we now have to go through the formal process of applying for a faculty. And there's a stack of paperwork like that for that one, so that will take place. But as I've also reported to you before, no works will be taking place for winter anywhere. Finally, just a reminder, Sunday, you've got a Westy City Jasmine in the park and they will be arriving for approximately one AM to set up.
Just in relation to that, it's slightly off the beat of the agenda, but if there are people available to help on Sunday, I will be, I am returning to go to the mall, but I do have another event to go to on Sunday, so I can only stay up to about 3am. Started trying to sell some, sell cakes during the band concerts. It's been very successful for a part of my charity, so if there is anybody able to help out on Sunday, that would be much appreciated. Thank you very much. Okay, so that moves us on to declarations by the public. We have some members of the public here tonight, which is, which appreciate it. We do like to get some feedback from yourselves. We do have rules, I think you've all been before, so you probably understand that we have a three minute, we're strictly just three minutes speaking and it has to be in relation to an item of the agenda. Can I ask how many people wish to speak this evening? And are we having ladies first?
Indeed, so I know what to say.
If, so do you have to stand now? No, you don't have to stand, you can sit if you wish, but if you wish to speak, just say your name and then-
Yeah, my name's Cecilia Collins. Thank you very much for putting this concern on the agenda for this meeting. I assume by now, if you're at all interested in the subject, you have read my email, so I'm not going to repeat my email. What I've done, if you bear with me, this is my criticism of action. I'm just going very briefly summarise what I say in my concern and then just give a bit of an update, some further information I've been able to find out. So this is about the decisions on planning applications at the county council. The situation that I've gone into some detail in, on in my email, came to light because of the objections to the application at 37 Brook Road, including by the town council twice, local residents and immediate neighbours. The application after three months was finally approved under delegated powers on 11th of July, with the decision on this taken by only two people, a case officer and the chair of planning. Town council objections and other material planning objections have either been poorly reported, ignored or ever written, and this is all documented in the case officers' report, delegation report, which is on the website in relation to this application. So to me and to quite a number of other people, it does seem that delegation, i.e. being decided by an officer in conjunction with one of the councillors, is now the accepted norm. Previously, any such contentious proposal would have been decided by a planning committee. I believe third party rights to object, i.e. anyone affected by a planning application, not the applicant, are now seriously limited and are readily being sidelined. The voice of the town council and planning committee members, they represent each ward in Oakham and they've been elected to represent residents. These are being sidelined. My understanding is now that basically a ward member can't simply request that an application goes automatically to planning committee. This has been the case in the past. Now, the reason why this is not so, and one of the reasons why this appears not to have happened in the case of the application at Brook Road is that I only found out about this delegation by a lot of cross determination and different levels and I was absolutely misled about it, but the delegation arrangements were changed in the annual review of the council's constitution on the 12th of May of this year at full council. Yeah, this delegation arrangement is part eight of the constitution and it is actually on the council website, if you dig very deep. Part eight, paragraph 72, deals with delegation to officers. And this year compared to last year, it now says, and this is point three under paragraph 72, a member may make a request but has to give reasons if he wants an application to go to planning committee. And this is subject to an additional assessment by the development control manager or the director of places with the chair or vice chair of the planning committee and they will decide. So it's no longer an automatic right that the member requests a planning application goes to planning committee. It's actually a discretionary matter, decided by basically two people, has been done in this case. Point seven is not dissimilar from the previous delegation arrangement and this says, a planning application can go to planning committee where there are material planning objections unless, and these include objections by the town council, unless under assessment by an officer or the chair or vice chair of planning, they judge there to be no significant adverse impact. So basically my contention is that I'm calling to question the application of these two criteria. The other criteria which the delegation we bring deals with are those which are made by anyone who works with council or is known to, people who do with council, or is a council or the council's own application. So thank you for listening to me.
Okay, thank you clearly for the work and hearing your voice that you feel very passionate about.
Well, I've got a-
And that's all. But thank you very much.
That was just a summary of one small aspect of it.
I'd like to take a statement.
Joyce, let's-
Can I just-
I just wanted to congratulate Cecilia on that report. It was very powerful.
Actually, what I've got here, I've first copied copies of the ongoing agreement. They're actually, you have to go into the full council.
Okay, can leave those for us to look at?
Well, they are, you know, if you wanted to photocopy them. You know, this is what I've been, basically my presentation-
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr Waters, please.
Trying not to sound battered and bruised, chair. I thought I might put some flesh on the bone. And the previous speaker is absolutely correct, but earlier this year the full council took that decision. I'm sure you understand that several of us did not agree with it and spoke vociferously against it. I think it does point out two things. A, the need for this council to take planning issues so seriously and I hope the new procedures you have, the new policies will have towards that. But also that it's important that you are taken seriously. And quite how we achieve that, I'm not absolutely sure. To put a little more flesh on the bone, yes, it's absolutely correct that we can now only apply for a planning application to be heard by the committee. We actually have to fill it full, believe it or not, and give reasons and have it approved by the chairman or whatever. That's very different to when we could simply say, there's a lot of disquiet about this, can you please make sure it isn't approved unless it goes through to the committee, which is how it was done previously. Several of us raised the point, have there been lots of frivolous matters being sent to the planning committee and no one can list any? That's because there haven't been any. So I don't understand the reason for it. A little more flesh on the bone for you, if you will. Twelve members of that development control committee, three of them represent Oakham Walls, out of the twelve, but two of them live in villages more than three miles from Oakham. And of those three, they only represent two wards, you know, it's two of them on board. So Oakham South East and Oakham South West are not represented at all directly on that committee. So again, no reason why you guys being so close to the public, you need to get it right. And to be heard, is all I can say. I should say I have considerable sympathy for the previous speaker, I should probably say more.
Thank you very much. It's clearly something that people feel very strongly about. And we've got a little bit over our time, but I think it was particularly important tonight to get all those points out and around the ball and the discussion, the information that we've been given. Does anybody like to make a comment around this particular topic? Stan, particularly obviously, I mean, obviously as a council, we're trying, we are trying to address, are we not, our communication with the county council?
Yes, the subcommittee have had a meeting and we do take the situation, particularly what you've said tonight, very, very seriously. Where we can, if there is an application such as 37 Brook Road, that we involve the Brooklyn County Council for that walk, if there is one. I was hoping, we were all hoping, that there was going to be a county council for every week. I think it's incredible that there isn't. In view of the, in view of the new agreement, because I did speak to another county councillor who is on the planning committee and asked him whether they could literally call it in. At the time when I spoke, they believed they could. Obviously with new legislation coming out, saying they can't. I think that we ought to make comment that we feel that this should be changed. I thought very, very undemocratic and only two people can make decisions such as that. There'd been a number of views, five or six at least complaining about the application. Now, these obviously weren't taken into account, but we do take the matter very, very seriously and it is our objective to have a much stronger profile on planning issue.
Peter, you wish to speak?
Um, sorry, I didn't understand that.
No, no.
Just to say, would the council consider it useful or not to write an open letter to the local press expressing our disquiet at this system and if need be, this particular case?
What would you want the council to do for you?
Sorry?
What would you want the council to do for you?
Town council.
Town council. What would this council do?
Well, basically I'm supporting what is it, council about?
Serves.
Serves, yeah. That you want a much stronger representation on planning assets and where your local residents have brought their cases to you and spent time presenting their case to you. I looked at the planning applications that had actually gone to Knessy since this new regime came into place and there were applications going in from a couple of villages, one at the direct request of parish, the parish council and another-
Member request.
Member request, yeah. No, plant council objection, member request. And that was just in the last three months. So why-
Or just an objection.
Sorry. Yeah. So why is the situation so different from Oakham? I mean, I've lived in Oakham Wire and I've made representations in the past and the members seem to be of the view it would go to planning committee, they're not in town council members.
Okay.
So I think the situation-
I can get back to your question. It's an unusual situation. We don't usually get into sort of this debate.
Sorry, but I was just finding out you more-
I do understand. A couple more councillors wish to speak. Could I go to more voters to follow this way?
Yeah. I think this is an excellent letter from Miss Collins. I don't think it's a good idea to write a letter to the press before first making representations to Brooklyn County Council. I think the last paragraph of the letter, I would just suggest modifying it slightly along the lines of, the town council requests Brooklyn County Council to review their current guidelines on delegation with a view to deferring to a full committee, a fuller committee, a full consideration by its members. Those applications where there are any potentially legitimate material planning objections, which they are minded to overrule, same thing I always ask.
Yeah, finally, what I wanted to say, having read that and investigated it, I did speak to Gary Poole, who is a top man there.
Yeah.
And I did say to him that there's a lot of disquiet about the way in which the proceeding was done. All he said to me was that it's done and dusted and I can't, nothing can be done about it. And he said that they took all viewpoints into account. So I said, well, you know, I just want to make it known that our view is that it should have gone to the planning committee. So I did that.
So do we have a-
Sorry, I'm going to stand.
No, don't worry. Do we have a proposal on the table? Are you, Peter, so did you want to speak?
I was just going to extend, Rob's very clear in what he said and were this earlier in the proceedings, I'd say yes, but they consider it done and dusted. And I feel that if we wrote to them suggesting that you do, it might possibly change things, but it wouldn't change things in this particular case. And I think we need to make this particular case stand out because it's unfair. So I would propose, if the council agrees, that we do write an open letter to the county council through the press, expressing our disquiet at the system and on this case in particular.
Okay, so we have a proposal on the table, that happens. What's the general standard is, sorry, did you watch the-
Right.
Stand is seconding that. Alf, did you, sorry?
I'm going to roll on this. I think we ought to give the county council the opportunity of making that change before we have to go to press or anything like that. It may be that it's not been fully discussed or debated at the county council. Now, whether, I doubt it can be changed now because it will have gone through council and it's that planning decision, so I doubt it can be changed. But for future events, I'm sure that we need to do something on this. And I think, I feel quite strongly about this, that I would want to do something about it, but I think we ought to give the county council the opportunity of changing it. If they don't, then we can take another action. I think that's the way to go.
Following some of that?
Yes.
With Peter's suggestion.
Shall we have those? A proposal on the table from Peter, so the town council writes an open letter to-
There's a proposal on the table from Peter, that the town council writes an open letter to the press expressing disquiet about the current system of delegation and in particular the situation that it's said it wrote, that's seconded by Stan.
Those four, sorry, thank you, I'm a little bit swayed by the people. Those who would like to take that action? There's a ghost. So the second proposal we then have is Rob's proposal that we approach county council with those list of words that you quite eloquently said, Rob, could you would you give to reiterate those for Richard, so he hears the... If it goes forward as...
I propose that what comes to town council writes to Brooklyn County Council, asking them to review their current guidelines on delegation with a view to deferring to whatever the committee's called, the planning committee or Development Control Committee.
My own words.
Okay. For fuller consideration by its members, those applications where there are any potentially legitimate material planning objections, which they are minded to overrule. It's just a version of the last paragraph.
Can I second that? Are all of those in favour of that letter?
Five.
Any against? One against, do you want that recorded? Any observations, go for it. All right, okay. So all those in favour of that, sorry, can you just put your...
Rob.
Your stance, you guessed.
Sorry, next one.
The letter that Rob proposed. We were just doing it then, because we've got a miscount on the numbers.
Oh, right, right. Okay, thank you.
If you can remember that, yeah, perhaps, yeah. Have you written that down at all?
I have.
Something like that. Under exceptional circumstances, I love in that one.
You asked what I wanted. Sorry, you asked what I wanted from the county council. And I said I wanted the situation to go back as it was, whereby ward members could request, and that request is automatically granted that the planning application go to the planning committee. That's a situation before, until this May, but you've not actually asked for that.
Your thoughts will be minuted.
Thank you.
So there will be part of our minutes, which obviously goes back to that. Number nine, authorisation to make payments exceeding £5,000. So this is to authorise payment as per Financial Regulation 5.6 for the £7,200 per se, this would be eighty, to landscape for the floral displays that are around the town this week. So we could...
Top of the list, brilliant.
Any... Seconded by Al, any of those in favour? Okay, that brings us to number ten, which is the audit plan. To consider the draft audit plan, somebody had a chance to look at that for the 2015 financial year. There's been a few small changes in the council's address to financial regulations regarding authorisation of the backed payment, which has been brought to council previously and included. And the council's signing of various documentation to approve the expenditure in the financial. Any comments or concerns regarding that particular item on the agenda? Next, I have a proposal to write out. Go on, seconded by Peter, are those in favour? Scheme of delegation, this is an annual proposal the council to consider and approve the scheme of delegation until September. This is purely, we aren't, we don't sit as a week later in the sort of period. And our next meeting is not until fourth of September, is that right? Terms of September, sorry. So... Was that right?
Yeah, basically, it's everything, basically, it's on this. It's very, very similar to the one that's operated previously. The only exception being that planning applications are no longer on it. Because planning applications will now be dealt with by the planning committee.
Any questions? No? Are we all, all those in favour? Okay, so prioritisation list of works. Request for parking provision along Woodland View and Willow Crescent. I don't know whether you've had a chance to read, but there's not a great deal of information on there to base your judgment on. But it's to consider the email from the Transport Strategy Officer of Brooklyn County Council regarding the vote and to make any decisions as appropriate. And there has been one request from the local public around the alteration of the highways on that road. It's about reducing, widening the road or having laymies for parking as currently cars are parked on bridges. Has anybody had a chance to read it? There isn't evidence of anyone else giving approval. Would we consider any contributions to the costs of that?
Thank you. Well, we seem to have very little information in this letter. It's either a road lining or a layby. Exact location and length of the road to be considered, not known at the moment. So, all they're looking for, I think, is our agreement that we go ahead with. But one thing that concerns me is the request for actual payment for highways work, which is not our responsibility. Highways work is the county council's responsibility. So I would definitely not make it approved on that. And I think, from my point of view, really, they've not given us sufficient information to make a decision on it. Because I'd like to see what they would like to put in place and how it's going to affect the people living there. Because we just do not have that information, really.
Anyone else wish to come in? So, what's the decision? Do we ask for further information from the county councils about what they're actually planning, how they've researched it, what the actual potential costs are, before we can make any decisions?
To see, I'm chairman, they're doing all this request to a one resident. I've been looking down local presence a few times, I cannot see a particular problem. We've got cars on vertes, but it's not ruining the vertes necessarily. And if other people that live there are happy with it, then it's as it is. If there are many to object.
Sorry. No, I can't, the trouble is with the hopper bus, it is very difficult to get round with the hopper. And, you know, it's, as Peter said, it's one person. I'm not in favour of spending money on highways.
Not, I mean, I agree with Al, I think it's a very scant bit of information, really. And it's not a letter that gives us anything solid that we can really make a decision about. So I hope that we give out more, say, more information. And currently, we are looking towards funding highways projects. But that's my proposal. Does anybody?
No, just my view on it is, I think they've obviously had a question from one member of the public, as has been said. They want to know whether on the basis of that one request, it is reasonable to carry on to the next phase, which is the assessment that you're asking about. And I think my view would be that purely on the basis of a single request, it would be inappropriate. And I also agree with Chancellor Jewett's point that we wouldn't want to fund...
No. So, okay, is that a second, is that a proposal then, that we... I did a proposal.
If more information is required, then I would support it.
Okay, so as I made a proposal, did anybody saw a second one? Joyce seconds my proposal. All those in favour?
More information is required.
More information required.
You know, that the council not carrying on highways projects.
Schedule number thirteen, schedule of payments. Does anybody have a chance to go through the schedule of payments? Any issues, concerns around any of those?
I propose a second.
Okay, propose a second, second by Stan, all those in favour? Thank you very much. Okay, so we've got planning applications, there is no... Oh, pardon, sorry. Statements of the council. Again, any questions, I'll go through them.
Yeah, but if a member has actually raised the issue that there are some variances actually above fifteen percent. So if I could just perhaps explain them and minute them down. A lot of these are to do with the way a flex budget is put together. So, for instance, number forty-four, which is additional maintenance, there's a £7,000 budget for this, and this is spread evenly across the year.
Could you, sorry, you're referring to the flex project last few pages?
Oh, yeah, the last few pages, yeah. Flex budget. Just to try and...
Some pink page, page two.
So, for instance, number, on page two, forty-four, additional maintenance. So what we've got there currently is actually an overspend of nearly £1,500. And the reason for that is it is spread across the year, but most of the expenditure happens at this time of the year. A lot of it doesn't happen during the winter months. A lot happens now, painting of the benches. Obviously, there are other things that members are aware of that needs to be done during the summer. And then over the winter, it tails off. So that's the reason for that. Now, whether we can keep trying to refine it down to, so that we, you know, we can get this more and more accurate, I'm not really sure. For instance, again, the forty-eight play equipment. Obviously, at this time of year, this is the time of year when we're having to spend money on play equipment. So that's the reason why that is again over the budget. It is still within the budget, but it is over that one. So it's very much a learning curve for this, as to when the expenditure actually happens. There are a couple of others that have been pointed out. Chairman's allowance, which is, I can't find it. Balance of Chairman's fund, for instance, so £1,011. This is number one hundred and five. This is the money that was left over from the previous chairman's year. Now, he did not spend that £1,011. Okay, so that's now carried over into the council's general reserves as per its financial regulations. It's not an exact science, but it's more exact than it was. Or if there's any other points they want to raise on this one.
Any questions? No, everybody?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, we're reading...
There's not a question, so I'd say that's very helpful and I propose that we accept the account.
That's proposed by... All those in favour? Okay, so then, okay, so we have two planning applications, two, with no screen. They are both tree applications for alterations to trees. I don't know whether you have a chance to look at it, Joyce, if you have. Okay, so the first one is Mrs Jean Howe. Trim whole tree back, ten to fifteen foot. Lower central leads out by ten to fifteen feet down to branch that is beneficial to the tree. Too many horizontal branches, overhanging neighbour's boundary in Willow Brook. Two fifty-seven, trim all the ends of hanging branches and that's in protein on the other members.
Chairman, I've visited both of these and left my card. Neither were in, but Mrs Jean Howe did actually bring me back. I've been in this garden on several occasions. I have no problem with this tree being trimmed back and suggest we approve it.
Seconded by Stan, all those in favour? Based on that information, that's the answer, thank you. And Mrs Caroline Amstein. Partial crown reduction of two polypheres and one U-tree. Reduced height by fifty percent of three-way landline and fell one small tree.
Chairman, I couldn't access this either. I've had no contact with the lady. However, I have spoken to a neighbour who has said that she's very environmentally, what shall I say, friendly. You see what I mean? She knows what she's doing with trees. The only two I could do were at the front of the house. I do have a sycamore, I think it's a sycamore. It fell over one of the streams and that should surely come out of flooding. So I can only say, for the two at the front, I couldn't do the others. But I would say that with a recommendation from one of the neighbours, then I think she knows what she's doing and I would approve it, thank you.
Okay, so I hope to settle that based on the information we've got. Okay, and Stan's seconded it. All those in favour? Thank you very much for undertaking that course. Thank you very much. And that brings our meeting to an end at seven fifty-one. Thank you very much, and thank you for the development of this evening.